The special convening of the board trustees of the South San Antonio School District to come to board. Today is January 11, 2016, and time is 6:00 AM. Yvette, go on, please.
Present.
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 Here.
Here.
Thank you, Yvette. Board members, before we conduct our business as planned, let me just remind everybody that this will be a peaceful meeting. We will respect each other. There will be no interruptions. Everybody will have a chance to speak. We will go around the table, and if there's questions, you will be allowed to ask questions. But please, let's be professional, and let's respect each other, and let's not interrupt. Everyone will have an opportunity to speak. Okay, the first item on the agenda is discussion of possible action. Number one is to receive a report by special counsel on the response to the Texas Education Agency regarding the complaint filed by the superintendent on December 16, 2015, and take action as appropriate. This item is a report from special counsel on the TDA complaint that was filed with Dr. Sabeti. At this time, I will turn it over to Ms. O'Hanlon.
My good morning, members of the board. I left on the dais two documents with our firm's letterhead on it. One of them has addresses, Michael Marath and Rod Rau on it. The other one does not. The one with the addresses is a letter which pursuant to the direction of the board last Friday, I sent today to the Texas Education Agency in response to the complaint which Dr. Sabeti made on the 16th of December of 2015. The other is reminding that the president wanted a recitation of my findings. What the second one is, is a double space, so I can read it, but also it is summary of my findings, which is the other letter, from which I've mostly removed most of the legal references to cases of takes of that nature. And I cut down the recitation of the facts. If you want me to proceed, I will, but you cut the recitation. I'm at your disposal.
Please, Ms. O'Hanlon.
All right, thank you. These findings will address as fully as I can within the time constraints our firm's response to issues contained in Dr. Siadvader's December 16, 2015 complaint to Commissioner Wiggs. In so responding, I have viewed him relied upon documentation attached to Dr. Siadvader's complaint. I additionally relied on publicly available resources and the form of board policies of board executives and minutes, all of which are available on the website of the South San Antonio Texas School District. Finally, I have relied upon information furnished by Ms. Ostegui concerning the nature of conversations with Dr. Siadvader on her October 20th, 2015. The following will be divided into sections. Section 1, breach of professional standards. Texas Education Code 11.1512C requires that the superintendent and/or his board must work together. South San Antonio ISD Board Policy BJA Local Operational Alliance has a statute by requiring the superintendent to, and I quote, "maintain positive and professional working relationship" for the board. As a preliminary matter, it must be noted that the complaint, Dr. Siadvader, contains what I can only determine to be an ad hominem attack by the superintendent located on page 2 of the complaint against the board president and her spouse. Her spouse has no connection with the district. Dr. Siadvader also publicly castigated the board of trustees for making negative public comments to the board during the course of what ostensibly was his superintendent's report on December 16, 2015. Such comments were contrary to professional standards for superintendents. They have an unmistakable tendency to, quote, "destroy the trust that superintendent and school board need if there is to be an effective working relationship." I'll refer you to the Haas versus Southside Independent School District case of 2014. As discussed in another superintendent case, ATOP Sosa versus Alaman, by making comments which were not positive about the board or the television threat media, the superintendent failed to maintain a positive professional relationship with the board of trustees, which is in direct violation of ISD Policy BJA Local, and failed to perform his duties as a person of ordinary prudence would have done under the same or similar circumstances, and acted inconsistent with the employee-employer relationship in a manner which was serious enough that remediation would not be required. With respect to the specific allegations made in the December 16 complaint. First, the elected election official. Dr. Siadvader's letter touches upon the president's actions with respect to South San Antonio ISD employee inner capacity as an election official with the district. The matter does not, nor has it ever, involved a question of whether the employee would remain as an employee of the district. The individual remains an employee of the district at this time. An issue was the employee's appointment as an election official within the district. Appointments for election officials are made by the board, and such appointments are made for specific called elections. From the time between November 2014 and the date of this letter, South San Antonio ISD has not conducted any additional elections. While paragraph 9 of Dr. Siadvader's March 19, 2014 employment contract does give him significant employment responsibilities, such responsibilities do not cover matters relating to the conduct of elections, or the appointment of officials is necessary for the conduct of district elections under the provisions of both the Texas Education Code and the Texas Election Code. Those decisions are reserved by law, either to the elected body itself or to other board-appointed election officials. There is no role for the superintendent in making decisions with respect to these items. Texas Election Code 32.005 vests the power to find election judges for political subdivision in the governing body of the political subdivision. Texas Election Code 32.033 provides that the governing body, the political subdivision, shall prescribe maximum number of election clerks, and just as examples, the things of which the board, not the superintendent's, authority with respect to elections. Ultimately, as indicated by the complaint, the individual resigns her election office, although there is an allegation of threat of employment action, there is no substantial threat of employment action or legal liability to the district arising from this transaction. The limitations period, all of the applicable limitations periods, have expired for crimes of discrimination, which are at the maximum 300 days from the date that the cause of action arises. Request of the names of new hires. Dr. Siadvader complains to the board president and requests the names and addresses of new hires to the district. Texas Education Code 11.1512C provides, "A member of the board trustees of the district, when acting in the members of official capacity, has an inherent right of access to information, documents, and records maintained by the district, and the district shall provide the information, documents, and records to the member without requiring the member to submit a public information request under Chapter 552 Government Code. The district shall provide the information, documents, and records to the member without regard to whether the requested items of the subject are or relate to an item listed on an agenda for an upcoming meeting. The district may withhold, redact information, a document, or record requested by the member of the board to be accepted. The item is exempted from disclosure or is confidential under Chapter 552 Government Code of the law." This subsection does not require the district or information, documents, or records that are not subject to disclosure under the Family Education Rights and Privacy Act of 1974, which does not apply to this situation. The names and addresses of employees which is directly information are not subject to confidentiality under the Chapter 552. The president, as all other members of this board of trustees, are entitled by Texas law to the information requested. No violation of law or any governance standard arises from such a request for information." Section 4. Board actions taken without sufficient notice, specifically the hiring of Sherman Wepkes in Hollis County. Dr. Siadvader's complaint takes issue with the hiring of a new law firm to represent the district on December 4, 2014, at which time four members voted in favor of the motion, and only one was against. The December 4, 2014 special board meeting was posted in accordance with the provisions of Texas Government Code 551041. The notice of the meeting was posted by Dr. Siadvader at 3:53 PM on December 1, 2014, a time which is more than the required 72 hours' notice of such being. All of the provisions of Texas Open Meetings Act concerning the posting of matters for board deliberation were met. There is simply no violation of law in this case. The superintendent cites Paragraph 2.3 of Board Operating Procedures as a source of potential constraint on the president's authority to propose agenda items at a time less than seven days prior to the date of the meeting. No such constraint exists. A forereading of Paragraph 2.3 of the operating procedures discusses the responsibility of the superintendent to prepare agenda items, quote, "in consultation with the board president and, if necessary, legal counsel for the proper and legally sufficient word and part of complication on the agenda." Board Policy DE Local provides, in relevant part, "Before the official agenda is finalized for any meeting, the superintendent shall consult the board president to ensure that the agenda and the topics included meet with the board president's approval." The board president's right to approve the topics to be included on this. The agenda necessarily includes both the power to add or to delete items from the superintendent's thread. In sum, the board president has the authority to direct the inclusion of legal counsel item for inclusion on the board's December 4, 2014 agenda. Even if that Paragraph 2.3 could legally be interpreted to provide some form of constraint, the board specifically voted to waive such constraint. Dr. Siadvader's complaint further alleges that a separate open meetings act posting was required as a legal predicate for the board's consideration of the motion to waive following the point of order. The contention is without merit. A government body must give public notice of the subjects it will cover and will consider in an open meeting or a closed executive session. In this case, the subject of the consideration was the employment of legal counsel. The matter was posted. Procedural motions made in the course of deliberations in government body which are made, debated, and voted upon, such as amendments or points of order germane to the board's consideration and merits that are posted for deliberation, are not required to be posted. There is no legal authority for the superintendent's assertion that a procedural motion required is separate and distinct agenda posting. The board was in full compliance with the provisions of Texas Government Code 551.041 with respect to all actions it took with respect to the hiring of legal counsel. The board was fully empowered to interpret its own internal procedures. Dr. Siadvader was present at and could have made a recommendation during the course of the board's deliberation on the internal selection item. Board Policy BJA Local, Section 3C, gives the superintendent the right to, quote, "provide recommendations and appropriate supporting materials to the board on matters for board decision." The superintendent apparently remained silent during the course of the board's deliberation concerning the retention of counsel. Section 5. The board president's intersection on behalf of employee. We have confirmed that the president did have discussions with the superintendent concerning the employment status of the coordinator position mentioned in his complaint. The employee in question had been employed by South San Antonio ISD for a period in excess of 20 years. The employee sought assistance from the president in arranging for her separation from the district via retirement so as to provide for continued eligibility for health insurance coverage. The employee developed cancer and would have encountered significant insurability issues in the absence of her retirement. Texas school law expressly creates a role for any trustee in connection with the resolution of employment matters. Texas Education Code 11.1513J provides, in relevant part, "The district's employment policy may not restrict the ability of a school district employee to communicate directly with a board member of the trustees regarding a matter relating to the operation of the district." Because employment matters, even self-employed, even about employing, are matters relating to the operation of the district. Because it is expressly authorized by the Texas Education Code, the employee's contact with the board member was a completely legitimate and legally protected activity. The trustee's discussion with the superintendent concerning the matter was a legitimate response to the employee's request for assistance. Had Dr. Siadvader chosen to proceed with a mid-contract termination, which was discussed in his complaint of the employee, the employee would have been entitled to a due process hearing before the full board of trustees, under district policies DCE Legal and DCE Local. Those specifically provide the mid-contract terminations are the province of the board of trustees. Paragraph 9 of the March 19, 2014 superintendent's employment contract was not violated in this case. Ultimately, the superintendent and employee agreed to a settlement under which the employee resigned the position. The matter was never taken to the board of trustees. This is because the superintendent was authorized specifically by his contract to accept the reservations of employees. So nothing of the board app with respect to the execution and agreement of the settlement agreement with the employees. Ultimately, it was settled. The salary stipend issue. The superintendent's complaint alleges that the board acted improperly with respect to stipends taken by the board on October 28, 2015. Clear legal authority indicates the final adoption of district pay scales remains within the side discretion of the board trustees at all times. Texas Education Code 11.201D6 and Section 44.002A require the superintendent to prepare an annual school budget. The power to take final action to approve the budget or to subsequently amend it resides exclusively with the board of trustees. As an integral part of the budgeting process, the board must adopt annual compensation schedules for district employees. Employee compensation constitutes the largest part of this school district's budget, and for that matter, any school district's budget. Final board took consideration of the master's stipend issue was scheduled for deliberation of possible action on October 28, 2015. Dr. Siadvader personally signed the agenda for our October 28, 2015 board meeting at 4:04 PM on October 23, 2015. His office was responsible for the preparation and distribution of the materials to the board, which accompanied the agenda distribution through boardroom. He had previously distributed his written recommendations on the same issue as early as May 2015. He had an access of five full days to prepare additional or supplementary written recommendations if he had chosen to do so. Prior to the meeting, Dr. Siadvader met with at least one trustee, Ms. Ostegui, in an effort to convince her to uphold his recommendation despite the existing complaint of the teachers. At the meeting with Ms. Ostegui, the superintendent was well able to articulate his recommendation. The superintendent does not directly challenge the board's authority to adopt district pay scales. Dr. Siadvader, however, did raise a number of collateral challenges to the board's action on October 28, 2015. They will be dealt with seriously below. The superintendent made recommendations on multiple cases. The record is clear that the superintendent had made recommendations concerning the master's stipends in May and in June of 2015. He committed to make additional recommendations in accordance with minutes with respect to this matter on June 20, 2015. The record is, I was unable to find out whether there were subsequent recommendations or not at that point. Dr. Siadvader had at least one meeting with a board member on October 28, at which he made the position clear. Dr. Siadvader was present on the October 28, 2015 meeting and participated in the discussions. Under Texas law, a superintendent is not entitled to demand that the board agree with his or her policy recommendations. Prior to final action on December 28, 2015, the board was well aware of Dr. Siadvader's position. The board majority simply disagreed. Dr. Siadvader participated in discussions on the merits of the issue, and his discussion cost an opportunity to make his views clear. No violation of Texas Education Code 11.051A1 has been demonstrated in this case. Texas Education Code 44052C has not been violated. Under Texas law, for any given year, it is necessary that there be a board adopted budget approving items of expenditure. Under district policy CE Local, the board is required to amend the budget when a change is made, increasing any one of the functional spending categories or increasing revenue object accounts or other resources for the budget year at issue. The board's action on October 28, and it's quoted in the larger letter, I might have repeated here, did not increase the district's need for additional funding in any functional category for the 2015-16 school year. Texas Education Code 44.052C was not violated by the board's action on October 28, 2015. The action did not affect the 2015-16 budget. Instead, the motion amounted to nothing more or less than a board adopted position statement as to how this particular group or class of legacy hired employees would be dealt with in future budget years. Constructed according to its own terms, the motion contains instructions to the superintendent as to budgeting decisions for this class of employees for 2016-17 and 2017-18, those school years. Not included in the letter is the fact that obviously future boards can redirect those students to do so. These are simply budgeting instructions for the preparation of the initial budget to the superintendent. So the board's action in October is not by future boards. It's a kind of laying down of a marker, if you will, for future considerations. The pre-adoptment of this incentive program allows potentially impacted employees the opportunity to engage in retirement planning. It is possible that some employees will accept the proposal and resign their positions during the 15-16 budget year. If they did, they would be paid for 15-16 funds. However, a mid-year kind of employer resignation would necessarily result in a payroll deduction from which the master's stipends could then be paid, without implicating the overall functional budget in that category. The board's action did not and could not affect the 16-17 or 17-18 budget adoption process. Those budgets have not been adopted. School district budgets are adopted on annual basis after publication as a notice required on an annual basis by Texas Education Code 44.004. The board was well within its authority in adopting the incentive program. The board's action did not appropriate funds for the 15-16 budget. Motion did not appropriate funds for either 16-17 or the 17-18 school years. Such appropriation for those years will only occur after completion of the required budget adoption processes, for instance, succeeding years has been completed. Texas Education Code 44052C was not implicated by the board's action. The board's action with respect to master's stipends violated no policy of law or board policy concerning district budgeting practices and was well within the board's authority. C. The incentive program was not a gift of public funds. Dr. Siadvader next advised the board's legal authority that the retirement incentive program constitutes a gift of public funds. It does not. Early retirement incentive programs have been intermittently adopted by all levels of government, including the adoption of such programs by the Texas Legislature. They do not constitute a gift of public funds. The prescribed incentive program payment is compensation to the employee accepting the employee offered in exchange for the employees surrendering his or her right to be re-employed in future years. That is separate legal consideration. All retirement recommendations programs work in the same manner. The district offers an incentive for a more highly compensated employee to separate and ultimately be replaced by a less highly compensated employee. As a result, the district's intent is to save money. The goal is to reduce the district's overall personnel costs in a manner which is humane, voluntary, and has the least negative impacts on the loss of long-term employees who have rendered valuable services to the students of the district. A governmental entity such as the school district board of trustees is free to make separation benefits available to deuced incumbent employees to resign their positions of employment as modifications to the benefit compensation plan. There is absolute legal authority cited in the attached opinion letter to support my proposition. The Texas Legislature has itself adopted legislation to induce early separation of state employees. The Texas Constitution puts the same restrictions on the Texas Legislature as are applicable to this district. There was no gift of public funds associated with the adoption of Senate Bill 81, which I chose because I was working for state government at the time. It was a 1993 bill that created an early retirement incentive program. They paid additional funds to employees who retired. Similarly, in that case, there was no adaption, there was no contracts for state employees because these are at-will employees who are violating the early retirement. Similarly, there are no constitutional infringements in this case. There are no additional statutory restrictions on the power of the school district to take course of action, similar to that undertaken by the legislature. The South San Antonio ISD board of trustees was authorized to adopt compensation benefits to induce resignations by staff. The district is receiving a benefit, i.e. a potential reduction in overall salary costs from this transaction. At the same time, the employee is not receiving a gift. He or she would be exchanging two items of value to that employee for the retirement. One is the right to continue employment of specified salary, and two, the way to repose for any and two, the waiver of post, any post-employment, retire, post-employment cost of action because they have voluntarily resigned from the district, and if they do, they have no separation cost of action against the district. The surrender of the right to continue employment at specific salary together with the waiver of statutory rights constitutes sufficient consideration to be surrendered by the employee to distinguish this contract from a gift. The board's program of the difference of the separation has Texas Education Code parallels. Under Texas Education Code 21.304F, the district may, after losing an employee termination proceeding before the Commissioner of Education, void the employee's prospective contract rights by paying one year's salary in lieu of reinstatement. In addition, the superintendent vibes are commonplace in the state of Texas, and they do not constitute gifts of public funds. There is specifically reference, they have to be reported by the Texas Education Code, and there's a penalty for paying more than one year. But by setting up statute, the Texas Legislature recognizes the fact that they exist. The incentive program also does not represent effective compensation. On December 28th, 2015, incentive program does not constitute extra compensation after services been rendered. The compensation is not being paid for the 15-16 school years. It is being paid to ensure district cost reductions in future years. Article 3, Section 53 of the Texas Constitution is not implicated. As discussed above, employees who reside or retire are often valued considerations in the district by surrendering their rights to reemployment under their continuing or as the case may be, contract. The consideration is separate legally distinct from employment duties. The district receives the benefits from the employee in the form of deduction in salary obligations which the district may otherwise occur in future budget years. The district receives the added benefit of achieving cost reduction without retort to the grievance process or the incurrence of future legal expense. The employee's base salaries for the current 2015-2016 school year remain on the statute. The incentive payment does not constitute an increase in the salary scales of the district. It is a separate payment, solely upon the employee's execution of a valid resignation from South San Antonio ISB effective prior to one of the school years and for future school years mentioned in the motion. Article 3, Section 52 of the Texas Constitution is not violated by the program.
Thank you, Mr. O'Hanlon. Paul Rivers, do we have any questions for Mr. O'Hanlon or any comments on his presentation?
Madam President, I have no response.
Yes, Ms. O'Sullivan.
Dr. Savadra, since the release of your complaint to TEA, I have contemplated my actions, actions of different board members and your own to see why all this started. To tell you the truth, I am still unable to determine why things are done in a manner that they have been done. This started with the teacher's master stipend. I do not wish to drum up what is now done, but the leading up to and the aftermath. On October 22nd, 2015, your secretary emailed me to set up a date for a lunch meeting with you. After several emails, it was set for October 26th at the Olive Garden for lunch. I was apprehensive about this meeting. I didn't know what the meeting was going to be about. At first, I thought it was about my business, or about my board number expenses, since a couple of board members were asking. Here are my notes and thoughts of the meeting. The focus of the meeting was to discuss agenda items on the board meeting being held in two days, primarily the master stipend. Dr. Savadra wanted to get a feel of how I was voting and gave his argument for his case and how he felt the vote should be. He stated that he was the one who started the master stipend program only a year ago and did not understand why the teachers were upset for something they received only one year. During the luncheon, he suggested the longevity stipend and then emailed the board the same suggestion the day of the meeting, which was passed as he had requested. The reason he was meeting with me was because, and I quote, "I seem to have a good head on my shoulders," unquote. We discussed another agenda item from Helen Mala, the extension of another year. I indicated that it was premature, granted on how I felt, and had responded to his performance evaluation. He was not concerned with this agenda item, whether it passed or not. Furthermore, he went on to disclose perceptions and personal opinions about certain board members. The district and the board would not move forward if Connie Prado remained president on the board and did not care if I told her this. The district and the board would not move forward if Helen Mala became president again. Stacy Estrada will always do what Helen wants, in other words, that Stacy Estrada is a Helen Mala puppet. He also said that some have said that I am a Connie Prado puppet, and that I would get a chance to prove that I wasn't by voting against Connie Prado. Yet, it was Connie Prado who championed for his longevity stipend. He also went on to say that we should not have allowed the teachers a voice because they may invoke others' speech, and that if he ever locked horns with the board, and if we do not do what he wants, he would leave. Quite frankly, Dr. Savadra, I felt belittled, coerced, and threatened. I avoided disclosing this information because I was hoping that you would remain, that we could get back to the business of moving this district forward, that the words the board members used to convey their feelings during the October 28th board meeting would pass. We have at all, we have, we have all at some point been hurt by our employers, but we find healthy ways to cope. You have since made it your mission to destroy this board and smear its members to TEA and in the media. You, Dr. Savadra, have been raised at the level of the tortured super hero and us, the majority, as the vengeful villains. But that is furthest from the truth. If only the public knew, the true battle waits behind closed doors. A few minutes ago, I indicated how apprehensive I was about the lunch meeting. I felt that if more allegations were forthcoming about my business than for my protection, I decided to tape the luncheon conversation. The total time of the recording is approximately 45 minutes. However, I have edited the tape to only those portions of the conversations which I just discussed. I will now play the edited tape with annotations.
Point of order. Ms. Osahin.
Hold on, Mr. Matheus. Yes, Mr. Matheus.
Ms. Osahin, did you tell Dr. Savadra at the time that you were going to tape?
I'm sorry?
Did you indicate to Dr. Savadra that you were going to tape the conversation?
No.
Then why are you bringing it?
Because it quite transpired in the meeting.
But you did not indicate that you were typing it at the time. It's okay?
I didn't violate your.
Counsel, is that okay?
Yes.
I don't believe you.
There's no provision against Texas law except for lawyers.
I don't believe you.
Well, I have a point of order. Hold on a minute, Ms. Matheus, if you wish to speak, please be recognized by the chair. If you have something to say, Mr. Matheus.
Ms. Prada, I'm not finished.
Just a moment.
I wasn't finished.
Okay, well, just a moment. Ms. Matheus, you will speak after Mr. Matheus concludes his remarks. But you interrupted him.
Yeah, no, you're interrupting.
Mr. Matheus, please.
Savadra did let me finish. Okay, I will. This whole board meeting is one-sided, and it has criminal actions and harassments against Dr. Savadra. And I caution, again, I caution Ms. Osahin for playing that tape. We have a member of the school board who is involved in law enforcement, and it would be very shameful if he supported this action. Now I'm finished.
Thank you, Mr. Matheus. Ms. Matheus.
Yeah, I have a point of order. The only thing on the agenda, it says, "Receive a report by special counsel and on the response to the Texas Education Agency regarding the complaint filed by the superintendent on December 16th and take action." This recording is not on the agenda, so it would be a point of order.
It was referenced in the report.
Hold on, Ms. Osahin. Ms. Matheus, your point is well taken, and I will refer this to legal counsel. Mr. O'Hanlon.
Who was hired by the board majority, who would do anything for the board.
Ms. Matheus, please.
I still have the floor.
Well, I know, but I prefer Ms. O'Hanlon. Ms. O'Hanlon, floor.
I'm sorry, I was supposed to.
Ms. Matheus, I have a question saying that the item is, the point of order is that the item on the agenda is the special counsel response to the agency on the complaint by Dr. Savadra, and she felt that the tape was not part of this item.
The tape was considered by me as part of my response of the point of issues in my company.
Of course. And the saga continues with the board chairman and the three stewards.
Mr. Matheus, you're out of order, and this will be your first warning. Ms. Matheus, you can continue.
Thank you.
I'll give the floor to Mr. Matheus. Go ahead, Mr. Matheus.
I was saying that the saga continues with the board chairman and our three deputies here on board. I continually told you all that this is continual harassment of the superintendent. In the past meetings that we've had, we haven't spoken anything having to do with education here in South San Antonio. All we have been doing is harassing the superintendent, and the board majority is guilty of that. Now we're going to hear the tape about a conversation that happened. The individuals on the tape weren't told that they were going to be taped. You have to tell the individual of that.
Are you done, Mr. Matheus?
For the time being, yes.
Thank you. I think that, Mr. O'Hanlon, you've already clarified that the tape does not have to be told by the person. Is that correct?
As long as one of the person knows is that it's going to tape, and the person paying it is not ordered, the answer is yes.
Thank you, Mr. O'Hanlon. Ms. Matheus, are there any more comments?
I guess just, the point of order is not on the agenda.
Okay, thank you. Your point is well taken.
If that's a violation of the board meeting.
If you're done with the comments, I'd like to now allow the other board members, if they have any comments, we'll start with Ms. Guerra.
No, not that one.
Thank you, Ms. Guerra. Ms. Osahin, do you have any other comments? No? Mr. Longoria?
No, no comments.
Thank you, and Ms. Estrada.
Yes, I do. I have a couple of comments and I have a couple of questions. Number one, I'm nobody's puppet. I'm tired of hearing, "You're on this side," or "You sit in someone's corner," or "You sit on this side or that side." Nobody up here tells me what to say or do. And whether that came from anybody, I don't care who it came from, if in fact it did, I'm tired of hearing it. I stand on my own two feet, I make my own decision, and when I vote, I vote honestly and think with my heart and my mind, not with a script in front of me. Second of all, this, I catch this as very funny because why was this not brought up earlier? Why did we wait till now? And the only thing that I can think of is we've had issues. Actually, to say that it only started with the teacher's stipend is a lie. That's a lie. This board has been divided from the beginning. So just to say that it started with the stipend, that's lying. And to sit here in front of the media and the community and say that it started with the stipend is a lie. Since the chairs have changed, that's where this problem started. Since we got a new board president, that's when the problem started, and way beyond that. So it's not just the stipends. So if we're going to state that trouble started with the stipend, let's state the truth, it was way before that. You know, they're going to play it whether we like it or not, that's fine, and to be honest with you, actually, I really don't care who thinks what of me. It doesn't bother me. What bothers me is that we continuously sit up here and behave less than schoolchildren, than elementary students. That's what bothers me. And to sit here in front of the community, in front of teachers, in front of the media, and to act like you're so professional and to put this smile, you're exactly right, they don't know what happens behind closed doors. I'm not going to be a part of the wolf in sheep's clothing. This statement that was sent to TEA on behalf of the board, I think that this should have been shared with all of us before it was even sent out. You know, I walked into this board meeting today and I overheard Ms. Prado stating that we would work more efficiently if we worked as a whole, as a board. This is not a whole. This isn't a whole. So there you contradict yourself. And then, from the beginning, like I stated, Dr. Savadra has not been allowed to do this job. And you sit here and you're pitting these people against each others, the teachers, the parents, the staff, and it even trickles down to the students. You lie. This is, this is a lie. And if anybody believes that, I'm sorry, but it's a lie. And just like I've stated before, I'm not going to lie for anybody, and they're lying to you. This was way back, and anybody who's been here long enough, which we have teachers who have been here long enough, you know very well that these issues have been going on for many, many, many years. How many superintendents are they going to go through before we get to what we need to? When are we going to have stability? When are we going to hear the voice of our teachers, our community, and most importantly, our children? This behavior isn't going to get that. It's not. And this, this is ridiculous. I will sit here and tell you that it does happen. He is not lying, and you know what? There are times we argue, and we didn't see eye to eye, but you know what? I can agree to disagree. But to sit here and say, "And I'll tell you, and I'm saying it in front of you," that's a lie. It has happened. I'm not going to lie for anybody. This stuff has happened, and to send a, you know, this is not from me, a response, this should have been shared with the whole board. And you weren't here at that time, so of course you're going to get what they said. Were we asked? No, we weren't. We had no conversation with you, Mr. O'Hanlon, and never did you come to me and ask me had any of this occurred, or how do I feel, or so on or so forth. We're supposed to be working as a whole, as Ms. Prado stated out there to the media. There has been no whole at all, and when it's stated, the majority? Why is there a majority and a minority when we keep saying we should be working as a whole? Why classify? Because there's division. No, I'm not done. I don't want to hear it anymore, if I could, because this is one-sided. It's completely one-sided. We have an attorney for the issues with the district. He's not here. And all of a sudden, because he isn't vetting the way they want him to, we have a new one here. And then they bring you, you guys, we hire you, we don't know how much it costs.
We didn't hire you.
Exactly.
We have.
Respect, Mrs. Prada, would you please let her finish?
We have nothing.
I am respecting her.
We have nothing. And just like Mr. Lopez, we have nothing. And to send this to TEA like, we're not, we may not be violating legally, if that's the way you want to say it or however you want to put it, but the point is, things aren't getting done honestly. And they're using the loopholes and the donut holes that they can find. You were hired, and we knew nothing of you, how much it cost an hour, what your past was, your record, nothing. Can you tell me that that's a whole? That's not a whole. Our parents come in here and speak on behalf of the students, and, you know, a circus goes on? Is that a whole? Why don't we ask our staff how they feel, and what kind of stress this puts on our staff? Why don't you ask the students what they go through? Because we sit in the news and to say that, you know, oh, the news is here because they're either called or because the story's true. They don't come here just to kick back and hang out with us. You know what? Because they see the repetitive nature of this board. And I, this is not my response, this is not on my behalf, because it is happening. You haven't been here to see it. And just like I stated to you before, I pray for you because you'll be in the same graveyard as every other attorney who didn't vent. And just as many superintendents we have lost, it's been attorneys as well. So good luck to you, sir, and that's all I have to say.
Thank you, Ms. Estrada. Mr. O'Hanlon.
Yes, I can respond. With respect to the allegation that I somehow met applause under the correct direction of respect. Every fact in this, in writing this response, I assume that every factual allegation may Every fact in this, in writing this response, I assume that every factual allegation made by Dr. Saavedra was true. I didn't contest a single allegation in his factual recitation of the circumstances that he laid out in his letter. There's not one instance where I disagreed factual with what happened. The issue is this, with respect to, and governance is an important thing with respect. I agree that the folks need to work together, but part of working together is understanding the roles and responsibilities of the individuals involved, in terms of that. The superintendent has additional powers in each country. There's no question about that. But they are not extraordinarily, an extraordinary expansion of the powers of any other superintendent state. He has the power to hire and to make recommendations and terminate where that is allowed by policy, employees in the district. The only place that where that's allowed by policy in the district are at will employees. Any contractual employees are required to work here. That's not something that I took somebody's work for. I looked it up in the board policy. All of the things that I quoted out of this, I pulled out of the board policies or adopted board minutes. I didn't take anybody's work for anything, except, including the settlement. I got a copy of the settlement on the one case with the one employee from the lawyer that was involved in it, because he actually used to work in the Texas Education Agency. And I knew there's no, because I wanted to understand the nature of that separation. I had a copy of the separation agreement, and I verified exactly what Dr. Saavedra said. He accepted the resignation of the employee, and it was his power to do that. So there's no factual dispute in this, in this letter, or my findings, in terms of that. I had taken the facts as they had played out. I attempted to interpret those facts in accordance with what my understanding of the law is, in terms of that. I told you that, and I mean this, and I say it every time, the law doesn't depend on who asks the questions. I'm going to call them like I see them. And with respect to the issues of the governance, in terms of that, you do have to understand the balance of authority. I went back to statutes on the budget. That's why I went back to the statutes with respect to the, and review the constitution, which why I looked up specifically with respect to departure incentive programs to verify that that was an illegal, a legal activity. None of that is involved in factual determination. Nobody's lying here at all. There's not, there's no disagreement with respect to the facts. The facts are what they are. What the disagreement is, is the application of the law to those facts. All right? And with respect to that, I attempted to do that. With respect to setting it out, my directive on Friday's meeting was to respond to the lawyer forthwith, which is what I did. So I didn't take it upon myself to do this. I was directed to do this by board action, and I did that, with respect to the board directive.
Like the board majority, as you, as we say, the board majority. I sit on this board as well, and would have appreciated to see this.
Let me, let me explain.
Ms. O'Handon, please.
Can I do one more, one more?
Please proceed, Mr. O'Handon.
The issue is this, and Mr. Marta said the same thing, that he didn't, I'm not his fault because I didn't get hired by him. I was not the board accident.
You would never have been hired by me.
And that's, and that's the problem with...
You were fired, and I had to fight myself.
And that's the problem with this board. And that's the problem with this board. Unless you get your way, you don't recognize that, that the people do not recognize the legitimacy of a majority vote. Majority, it takes four to get a vote, win a, win a, motion gets four votes, a majority. It is the action of the district. That's, and that's the law. So I work for the district. So when I do that, and I get charged by the board, I am writing by a majority board to take an action. I'm doing that on behalf of the district, which is on behalf of all of you. You may disagree with it, but it is still an action of the district's board, on behalf of the district's board of trustees. That is the requirement. And I will indict and hire to represent the board, the entire board, not a majority, not particularly members of the board, and win a vote. You want to, you want to give me a direction, win a vote. That's how, that's how it works. Okay?
Yes, Ms. Stradale, it's not about winning a vote, sir, it's about doing the right thing. If you don't come here and win a vote, or buy a vote...
It's not buy a vote. It's not about this board.
I said quietly, but him, so with all due respect, I will do the same. To say that, that, you know, all of this, you, this is not all true. And you just said that you were hired to represent all of us. So in that same sentence, I am all of us, and I did not receive this.
Nobody did. I said it did.
I'm sure nobody did. I'm sure nobody did, Mr. O'Handon.
I laid it on the dais tonight. It was there when you walked in, just like it was for every member of this board.
I have a question now, Jim.
Well, Ms. Stradale, you done? Right now, yes. Thank you.
Ms. Marta? Does this include the 10 hours that you billed us before you were hired, five more?
Still withdrawn, it's a mistake.
No, yeah, I'm sure it was a mistake. 10 hours before. You've been hired.
Just a second. Will you let Ms. Marta? Okay, thank you. Hope there was any other comments. Yes, Mr. Marta?
As a member of this board and a governing body, there's no way I can accept this report without getting input from TEA. As far as I'm concerned, this whole report is one-sided. It favors the chair and the board majority. It doesn't include me at all. I want to hear input from TEA. And I know what my little dog at home can do with this report.
Are you done, Mr. Marta?
For the time being, yes.
Thank you. Anybody else have any comments? Ms. Osceguin, do you want to proceed?
Yeah.
Okay.
Ms. Prado, let me, can I comment, please?
Yes, Ms. Prado.
Earlier today, as you know, I was out in town attending a funeral. But way back, I learned that Ms. Osceguin had invited the media to be here. I'm certainly welcome. And I also learned that she had a presentation. We talked about Fight 30, Fight 35, and after what it was about, and she says in reference to do the TEA complaint filed or something like that, and that Mr. O'Handon had said it was okay. So I called Kevin, Mr. O'Handon, and he told me it was a recording that she had secretly recorded of the luncheon meeting that she talked about a few minutes ago. So I asked to receive the recording of the tape ahead of time, to review it. She turned it over to me, 10 minutes, four or six or so. I listened to about six minutes, and it was pretty much the start of our luncheon meeting, and turned it over to our staff so they could go ahead and play it. But what I since have learned a few minutes ago by Ms. Osceguin is that she has edited this conversation. She has 26 minutes out of 45. And so unless she has the 45 minutes to play the tape in its entirety, I'm not going to allow the staff to play the tape. The board can direct, to direct the staff, but you won't be able to do it tonight, since it's not posted on the agenda. So, so, so if she has the 45 minutes, we'll play the 45 minutes of the complete conversation, but I'm not going to allow the staff to play a portion of our luncheon discussion.
That is, Ms. Osceguin, I mean. Ms. O'Handon, can you tell me, what authority does the board have as far as utilization, audio creation in making the presentation?
You can direct. In my opinion, you can direct the staff to do it.
So even though Dr. Saavedra has said that he would not have staff doing it?
I think, I think that, and I think it is deranged to decide, in terms of that.
Point of order?
He thinks.
Any member of the board cannot direct the staff. It has to be the superintendent. You are no better than that, Mr. O'Handon.
Ms. Marta, you're out of order.
You're out of order.
Mr. O'Handon, I'm sorry. You can continue.
You can direct the, you can direct the staff. Maybe you can direct the staff. We're not suggesting the staff.
No, you can direct the staff.
Sorry, Mr. O'Handon, I can't hear you.
You can.
Will you let me, will you let me talk?
Well, tell the truth. Tell the truth.
Ms. Marta, your, this is the second time that you are...
I had to, I had to.
Ms. Marta, you're out of order the second time. One more time, then I will ask to have you escorted out of this meeting.
You cannot have me ejected from this meeting. You're no better than that.
Mr., just one more time, Ms. Stradale.
The only way you can have him ejected is if he slaps you or does something illegal, but he has every right to.
And this will, and he's a directed, after arresting Dr. Saavedra again.
Ms. O'Handon, please.
You can give Dr. Saavedra a lawful directive to do that. If he doesn't, it's directed insubordination. If he, if he is directly insubordinate, in my opinion, you can direct staff to do that. If they don't do it, they will be insubordinate. The, so, if, do we have a copy of the longer one?
I think I do.
Hmm?
I think I do.
Just plug it. I can supply the cup for a second.
We have a hundred and fifty before we descend to 45 minutes. Just a minute, Ms. Marta. I think Ms. Stradale had something to say.
Is it in?
Mr. Marta, would you please let Ms. Stradale speak?
I have a question. Today on the agenda, with respect to Mr. O'Handon, on here it states, receive a report by special counsel on the response to the TEA regarding the complaint filed by superintendent on December 16th, 2015, and take action as appropriate. I do not see any reason to keep doing this. I don't believe that this recording has anything to do with TEA, what problems we are having with TEA, or what directive TEA has given us. I don't see any reason, if this is something that she's going to respond to, or what had happened, if you mean, I was there, I can't say what happened, or whatever was said, but I think that's between her and legal. Just as this was kept until today, I think that that's a response that should go between you and her herself. That's a conversation that, you know, she has with superintendent, and if she's saying that it's in regards to what we're talking about today, then that should be between legal. We should not subject our community, our staff here, and everybody else to this mess. This is absolutely disgusting already. I'm sick and tired of seeing this, as a parent, not just as a trustee. This is gross. And for you to sit here and agree is even more disgusting. You're our legal counsel, and I would think that you would say to do something that would make us look a little more better than we do now. This is disgusting. If she has an issue, let her take it to you. You were hired to take care of the board, so take care of it. There's no reason for this. This is enough. And if you say that you're neutral, then do what's right. If you can lay your head down that way comfortably, then shame on you. Do the right thing already, stop. I don't want to hear that dumb conversation. I don't care. What I want to do is get back to business.
To students.
Students first.
You have every right to walk out. You've done it before.
And so have you, man. And this is exactly...
Yes, you have.
And I wasn't in it, man.
Ms. Osceguin, I don't think Ms. Stradale is finished yet.
For you to sit here and say, yes, I have walked out, but you know what? Anytime one of these community members, or media, or anybody else has come knocking on the door, here's what I answered. And I take full responsibility for my actions. Whether it was right or wrong, I take responsibility. Thank you.
Mr. Marta, just a moment before I allow you to speak. Dr. Saavedra, would you allow Ms. Osceguin to have staff to play the edited version so that it's not 45 minutes long?
If you're directing me, I'll direct the staff. I'll do it in protest, but I'll direct them.
Okay. So, so at the request of the board, though, you would not allow staff to do it?
Sorry?
At the request of the board, asking you to have staff do it, you would not allow staff?
Not the edited version. She got the whole 45 minutes. I'll let them do it. But if you want to direct it to, let them play the 46 minutes. I'll do it in protest.
Well, I think 45 minutes is quite long.
Yes, ma'am.
And I think the, Ms. Osceguin, the portion that she edited was just a conversation having to do with the meeting.
How do you know that?
I like, we don't know. I think in fairness, I think it's proper for everyone to hear the complete conversation and not pick and choose what she wants us to hear.
Exactly.
Yep.
Exactly.
Yep.
Okay. Ms. Osceguin, can we do that too? We have a five-minute break. Board members, five minutes recessed, the time...
I got a sound.
Hold on, Dr. Marta, how long would it take staff to prepare that?
Just two minutes. Two minutes?
Five minutes? Okay. We're going to take a, Ms. Marta, just a moment. We're going to take a five-minute recess.
I have a time.
Time is 7:05.
I have a time. Is, is Mr. O'Handon going to be on the clock for 45 minutes, just doing nothing? That's not helping the district.
Yeah, well, we can come back in five minutes.
Who edited it? I wonder.
I'm looking at the page.
And she edited it.
You ought to be checking. I'll be 45 minutes of board.
I was bragging about you today.
Not just about you.
Well, I'm asking.
Anyway, so we were bragging about, bragging about you today. Oh, yes. So anyway.
So we were just like, here we are.
Well, I know. I mean, like, I'm... Y'all, I don't know. I don't know. Y'all, I don't know. 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 Happy New Year. Happy New Year. Happy New Year.
I'm sorry.
I'm sorry.
No, so. I'm looking at, uh, we're looking at, we're looking at, we're looking at, we're looking at. We're seeing. I'm looking at, we're looking at, we're looking at, we're looking at.
I'm gonna talk to the president about making the Francisco, the little L for the bus stop, make it a little one way, like, price, which is, especially if you have a pop-up. It's dangerous because it gets to be in the public domain area. So see, he was just signing it out that they make it, um, one way, two ways.
And, right, 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 but that's.
Hi, Ryan. Good old Ryan. I've seen you a long time.
I just got back to San Antonio a few months ago. I'm sorry. I don't know, we're in Florida. I've been in Martha's Vineyard for a week. So, uh, I don't know, there's a bit of, still.
Uh, it's from, um, eighty, whatever, eighty-four.
As a term?
But they're a bunch of.
No, not as a starting, that was. But as a starting.
Oh, yeah.
So they're gonna do the playground, we're gonna have an outdoor classroom with a little ceiling.
So we're sorry.
So today we had a meeting about, uh, what, what we're gonna make the, what are we gonna bring in?
Start the college town.
Like, we're gonna take care of the groups. We're gonna, this is close, but I, so I'm confident they're gonna open on, 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 on.
Is that when they're gonna go work on the project this year?
We're all gonna, it's based on.
They had postponed it because of the weather, so it's gonna be this end.
And there's three, there's three booths of soldiers, third, and, at total of seventy, seventy-five.
Anyway, so, we were just kind of like, um, trying to look at, you know, thinking of what we call you.
I.
Well, and that's, and especially. If we have the horses to carry it. You're right for.
Hey, hi, Judy, how are you?
Busy.
Yeah. Yeah. Just like all the different. Yeah. Yeah. Right, yeah, no, that's why I figured that it was in there, so, yeah. Right, yeah. I think I lost in the bathroom. I checked everywhere.
Yeah, we turned it in.
You're, you're two second on it.
Right. This one.
Yes. Okay, board, we're ready for being, uh, Dr. Sabaeta, is staff ready?
We're ready. Now we're ready.
Can you? We're having, uh, come back to go.
Is it Friday, was it erased?
One of the pumpers.
Are you good?
I'm good.
Motion to table and give you a better quality.
I went by that as well. It's right off that.
Trying to remember where we went and do that one. Can you hear it fine? Is it simple? I'd like to know if you're making it.
Okay.
We're gonna restart. Does it sound okay?
Raise it up a little bit.
Uh, we're afraid of it. Are you?
I'm good. I'm happy again.
Really?
Yeah, how about on your end, you play?
The grandfather's stipend? It is? Okay, okay, I already did guess. Well, initially, when we come back to Jim, when we went over it to, we had a special call meeting, they were speaking, and then we put it back on the next agenda. It was the Jim's report. When I did read that agenda item, I did see so. Yes, I did see what you pointed out this last week. How the base pay, their stipends in the year, and minus the whatever. Okay, I did see that. But what, in the, again, we had a meeting, this was a special call meeting, but I figured it was the teachers' work. There were no, we're done, and the demand went out. Nobody has any, but he, any back from them. And so, okay, so we voted for it, we thought it was okay. And then at the meeting, it was, even though I had read that, it was, I guess it was, it was not Berkeley, or maybe miscommunication on the other part, I had thought the stipend was not going to be affected. Even though he had said that on the agenda item, I thought that the grandfather's stipend was not affected. Because I was unaware of that, sure. Yeah, how masters teachers still get a bachelor's pay for a masters stipend. Right, that's correct. That's what they were saying this last week.
Okay, okay, the worst time. And one day I was thinking about, is stipend really a wage money?
Yeah.
I'm doing the creation.
Yeah, I heard that.
Alright. And we got, I needed to point that out, because a lot of the discussion was like, it's been in place forever. And one of the best, both quarters, about like, playing the night craze, that is, very difficult to say. It would actually, in those states, it was like, separate salary.
There was three.
The date went, last year ago, last summer, four, twenty fourteen, there was three, three salaries, and one, and one. And that's how it was. And, and I take that to basically, one salary. That's the best, although, I believe with our, in conversation, nine is the fact, uh, credit, back to state. But it's, now there's no such thing about, there's three salaries. And then we compensate like, three years, five years, six years. So that's kind of what it is now, it's just, and it's like, last year, that year, also, one salary. And, and then second started, they moved up, moved up all the time.
Okay, yeah. So that was, I mean, I wasn't necessarily, understood that we couldn't affect their compensation. And, um, when I did see it on the agenda, that we were going to be speaking about it this last meeting, I knew, I mean, just by the volume of emails we were getting, I'm sure everybody else was getting them, that they wanted to hear. So I know there may be a difference to hear. So then when I saw the agenda item, I knew we couldn't really, uh, make an action that we were going to speak on.
Right.
And, and get both sides of the story, per se. And so, so I was okay with that. What, what was kind of, one of the stat mean was, again, with Helen and Stacey, we, we telling them.
She's already been asked.
Yeah, I'm glad. And most of them, you know, that need a, that need a.
About this minute, this minute, right?
Yes.
And I think, and I don't have a, but, with that, it's probably, but basically, I was getting, and, on my position. And, the follow-up, in the initial review, was, discussing off-line. Right, well, under the post, it was reported, that it was, you get a, another one. Where you can't exactly, right, that from, put on there, here's the, the off-line.
Back. Maybe we should have been a little more. I guess our, we sort of really paid attention to that purpose, I guess. But so that the teachers knew what was going to happen.
What they were getting.
Yes. And like I said, when I read it, I knew that was going to happen. And I knew that was going to happen. But when we were discussing and moving on it and having a a discussion, you know, when Stacy and Helen and all that made those comments, you know, hey, is there a change? No. Or they don't lose any money? No. And so, and they did it. You know, none of them did. But again, their, that change of, oh wow, I didn't know my stack was going to go into my base bank, which is not a good thing. It's not even like you're paying even more. But then they just, they're focusing on that stack being less, which was told to them. That it was going to be, it wasn't going to be that seven thousand, it was going to be that five thousand. It was going to be either eleven hundred, twelve hundred, or two thousand. And so, although you could have done anything more, it was, it was clear.
I would, I would, the most people understand what was coming in the new government path today. I'm of the opinion that the easier the more vocal teachers come to release information so much, it's like some of the, some of the other grandfathers actually believe in the new change.
Yes.
I do believe that some of them think it's a change somehow. But I think it was based on a lot of misinformation that was put out there. So kind of, if the emails were, this weekend, we all, when we talked about money going to the, uh, less than first year, that's never been the case, ever, you know?
Yeah, because they're the same experience, but not at one district, not at our district. They came in with that experience, so they made it be the same as her, to the same experience.
Right.
But I do like the point that you made, that maybe we can get a one gendering site for those who have been faithful to us.
Yeah.
So that, that kind of give them a little separation.
You can do a planning skill. Maybe, maybe years, maybe a hundred, twenty years, maybe thirty years. What, what, you don't need a planning skill, but that all of the issues there, that, no, you just want to do.
Right. You know, once they get those milestones where you're going to hit that.
Right.
I do like that.
Yeah. I did, if you have a system that works for everybody, right?
Yeah, and then you're not having to make changes and worry about these select individuals that the board is sometimes. Now, I did have a question for you, though. On the agenda item that Helen has presented. Going to extend your contract. So, were you aware she was going to do that?
Yes, sure.
And so what is your opinion on that?
You know, the main position is coming, uh, college. You should go to health school. This, it's like a good reason. The goal of this, you, the goal is to go from the one, a month, you know, a really big five, five years, six years, whatever it takes. They gave, and they told, they had a last year, it was, it was going to be, more much to be done by hell. There was going to be a major, you know, support million, that's going to be a million. I'm here only because I think I could, I'll take, I'm going to go to the night.
Yes.
And, you know, like my, I still thought it was quite, I, I, I'm not a law firm, going through, you know, awards. And if, if, you know, we get to work, if it goes by a three year, or a five year, or a one year, I'm walking out of that, same thing. And I had enough, y'all, and things, whatever, the bank. Like, but she, she did tell me to change the schedule. Like, yeah, but, but you got a period, like, you just wanted to make it good.
First of all. Nothing.
Sorry.
I didn't see her reaching out to why. Um, you've been with us a year and a half months. And, uh, going back to your comments, uh, for you. I was, I was surprised, I'm sure you have my garbage, and I speak with you, and kind of, whether to move me down the comments here. So, uh, it was basically me. And, uh, again, I'm very happy with what you've done with the district. I'm very, I, I perceive the changes that have happened, the transparency that is coming forth. Very happy with that. The goal that we had set, we're evaluating yearly, they were too high. Too low. I know that, yes, I told you that. And then not only that, it's also about many, many, because of the tools that were placed. You know, you look good, that we are good medical guys, but then when we realize, ooh, care manager is very important, that's a nerve. Understand that completely. But then when you do your, when you get your summary, yeah, you did do a lot of great changes and you're happy with it. And so when we came back with the next, uh, goal for this coming year, we're going to keep here. I saw that you did, you made some revisions and said, okay, this is what I need to continue with this year. Love that. So I think, I mean, I'm happy with you, I'm happy with what you have brought to the district, and what you continue to do. Uh, this grandfather's stack, and like you said, you know, there's, he's done rubbing the wrong ways, individuals don't like change, which was just right about everything. And I know that you were working diligently, and I like, like you said, plan, and you know, hey, along to the least I could, you know, that, that seems pretty great. But the way, you know, in explaining it to me, you know, an experienced teacher is an experienced teacher, whether they work for our district or another district. They still have that bottom line, this is for many years I've been a teacher, and I've, I've taught, and we do want to attract those type of individuals to our district. You know, for whatever reason why they need their district, but yes, it's a part of ours, that's, that's a bless. And so, I can see how their territorial, these teachers are saying, well, gosh, they're just making just a tad bit less than me, and I've been there forever. I can see the territorial, you know, that community play, and, um, and reading their pay, the differences of, having to read. So I just, I, I, in my opinion, I need a little premature for that tonight, and I'm like, free to say whatever. You know, so. And, and in my opinion, I think that, for the most part, the board seems to agree with a lot of things when it comes to this, we, the district boards. But when it comes to these political agenda campaigns and items and stuff, oh my gosh, it just gets very murky in there. I see why they want to do certain things and, and, and the only reason I can come up with this, it has to do with political agenda.
It's probably, it's probably, you know. I, I, I think, uh, that I know, I think you're, I know, you're, I mean, I don't know, I know, like, long, you're one of the presidents, we will totally, kind of, the only way this is presenting is the leadership of the board, right? I mean, whatever for it, you can tell all of your hair. Uh, the, 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 you know, I, Stacy, I, I text Stacy.
She's, uh, it turns out that her husband is a brother to my dad's longtime friend. And so we figured that out, uh, after the fact. And then I was surprised, I mean, I grew up with her in-laws, per se, her in-law, brother, brother mom. I was thirteen when I met her. And so, I was four. But that didn't go.
I, I think it is that, that, that the board is, other than you two, they, 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 and Stacy, they told you, but, oh, and what, and, and, and they were confused, you were confused, was that by sixteen?
Yeah.
The reason I think that you, and, and not anybody else, I really believe you, and I, I really think, you tell me what I need to do right there.
Yes, thank you.
Uh, but I'll, you know, you're also pressured to, you know, by, by they.
I'm under pressure, uh, when the agenda items come up, I know you always say, questioning, listening, questions you have. I go to Connie and I say, hey, okay, what is this, what do you need? And I want to party with stuff I should know from my reading that I should do. And I have read, oh my gosh, a lot of reading. And so, you know, I say, okay, what does this mean? You know, what has happened in the past, why is it on the agenda, this is something that's standard, and it comes up every, uh, within a month, a year in November. So I kind of know, okay, starting November, from now on, you know, certainly get that and shouldn't be sick. I should, you know, very little difference is, and we're moving forward in a good way. And so I'll come to her and say, hey, what does this mean, why is it on there, and stuff like that, and so, and she never says, I mean, she was very good at, what, this is what it is, you make your decision. And it happens to follow her decision, or what she's going, right? Uh, and then I'm surprised at a certain, I mean, like the resolution I got, I always didn't thought Stacy was going to use it. Because you, because what she meant to us, that, and.
This is my operation. My operation is to see. Look, go to those, the one you talked about, the rest of the job. In that case, but the other side, only against the majority.
Yeah.
Is, if, 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 if,[994.88][994.88][S02, if, 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 if,
Okay, that concludes the response that was heard. Members, are there any more questions? Um, to the other question, please.
I, I know.
Yes, Mrs. Strada?
Hmm, something was mentioned quite a bit in there. I just want to state that, um, Mrs. Oscegi did text me exactly, it was Friday, it was 10:23, 2015. And in that text, like I said to everybody, I'm not gonna lie for anybody, I'm not gonna offend for anybody. She said, "Just saw the email, no way, sorry you were going through this." My response is, "I knew it would happen, and for Connie to say I showed it to her on my phone is a lie, but it is okay, I will rely on what holds up my faith, and Christ is all that matters." She said, "Was the letter you were talking about when we were in Austin?" I said, "Yes, it is, and at this point, it doesn't matter, you heard her say it, all is fair game in campaign." She said, "I haven't seen the letter, I was waiting for you to show it to me, and again, so sorry, you were on the news again, but it does look like the weekly newsletters that we get." I said, "Yeah, it does, but it isn't, oh well, I'll take that with a grain of salt." She said, "Good luck, God is in control." And I said, "Yes, he is, and when he is with you, who can be against you?" That's exactly what I said. Never did I blame Connie Potter for all to see. I'm not lying. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
And Mrs. Strada, anybody else have anything more to say?
The only thing I have to say is a biggest waste of taxpayer money in order to be embarrassed of yourself and ashamed.
Thank you, Mr. Martin. Anybody else?
You're welcome.
Okay, uh, I do have some comments that I'd like to say before we conclude with this. The response that we just heard, uh, from Mr. O'Hannon is a powerful and true-based report. The old saying of "There are always two sides to every story" is certainly confirmed with the O'Hannon response. The downside to this whole affair is that it should never have taken place, but it was not the board of trustees who crossed the line. Because the given recording, I believe, is an indicator of an unfortunate symptom that we must overcome. There are over 1,000 independent school districts in Texas. In the great majority of school districts, successful school boards and superintendents work within the legal framework that has been established by the legislature and the Texas Education Code. There is no reason why our school district should be any different. Close to 10,000 students and over 1,000 teachers and staff depend on us for success. The students and their parents depend on us to provide the best quality education possible. The teachers and the staff members depend on us to provide them the tools they need to ensure our students succeed. Our teachers also expect to be supported. They also expect to work in an environment that's... President Lincoln once said, "A house divided against itself cannot stand." Here itself stand, we should be no different. We must exist and thrive within the legal framework established for us and work together for the sake of the girls and boys of our school district. Politics is unavoidable in any school district, but there is a time and place for these events. This boardroom and our schools are not the appropriate place. Our current president has said, and I quote, "Elections have consequences," unquote. We will have elections and the community will decide. In the meantime, however, we must stand united so that we can succeed together. And now for, I have just one housekeeping request if I could, and I'm certain, uh, that the representative from our local newspaper is in the audience tonight. Uh, my request is that when you write your story tonight, that you please provide a link for the readers to access Mr. O'Hannon's response. Please, I thank you in advance. Okay, with that said, there's no more discussions, I do have a motion, a two-part motion if I could make it, please. Uh, motion reads, I move that the board direct the superintendent to post the response to Dr. Saavedra's complaint on the school district website no later than close of business January 13th, 2016, and further, that this post to be placed on the district's main page with a user-friendly link. Second, I move that the board direct the superintendent to include a summary of the response in the next edition of the Today South Sand. Further, that the summary be developed by special legal counsel. I have a motion, do I hear a second?
I second.
I have a motion and a second, go call, please, Eva.
Discussion.
Just don't, a second, Mrs. Strada, go call. I'm sorry, I, I, let me take that back. We all have discussion, Mrs. Strada.
With that motion that you're making, are we gonna motion that, um, the superintendent's complaint also be issued in the paper as well, and not just the response from the attorney?
Like you said, there's two sides to every story. I think the community deserves both sides, not just one.
Not just one.
Yes.
And that would be transparency. Who's stocking on the floor?
Sorry?
You have the floor.
Oh, exactly, uh, Mrs. Strada.
Are you on camera now, Mrs. Oscegi?
Uh, Miss, I'm sorry, Mr. Martin. Mrs. Strada, right?
Maybe they don't have a lot, but we can.
You made a comment.
I hope, I hope.
Okay. Mrs. Strada, I think you made a comment, was that all of your discussion?
Yes, I'm making a substitute motion.
Ms. Martin, are you asking to be recognized?
No, I just made the response to this, um...
A substitute motion.
Well, you were recognized, and you just made, Mrs. Oscegi, you're on the floor as well.
That's okay, Mrs. Oscegi, and you're welcome.
Okay, there's a motion on the floor, and session.
I have discussion, I have discussion, for your order, I have discussion.
Yes, Mr. Martin.
Uh, you said that, uh, you asked the Express and News for a link so that the attorney could respond?
No, I don't think that's what I said.
What did you say then?
I asked that they provide us the link so that they can also, just as they did with Dr. Saavedra's complaint, they had a link for his, that they also provide a link for the response from Mr. O'Hannon.
Okay, and is Mr. O'Hannon gonna be on the clock for that? Since you're trying to get money from him. I'm asking a question.
Mr. Martin, I think Mr. O'Hannon has provided a summary that he just read.
No, you said that you want the Express and News to provide a link so Mr. O'Hannon can respond, and my question is, is Mr. O'Hannon gonna be on the board like he does for other things for those responses? That's all I'm asking, a yes or a no.
Mr. Martin, Mr. O'Hannon has already provided the summary, he will provide that to the Express News.
That's not what I asked.
Mrs. Strada, you have a question.
You're not answering my question. What are you afraid of?
I'm not afraid of anything, Mr. Martin.
Well, then answer the question.
I answered your question.
Then answer the question.
Obviously, you don't understand the answer.
Are we going to receive, are we going to receive a link bill from Mr. O'Hannon?
We will, we will receive an invoice for the board.
Because it seems that Mr. O'Hannon takes a lot of the space.
Mr. Martin, you are out of hand, Mr. Martin.
Well, if you don't respond to my question, all I'm asking is for a simple question.
This is your last warning, and I won't have you ejected from this meeting.
Well, answer my question, Ma.
I already did, thank you.
Oh, you didn't?
Mrs. Strada?
Well, before everybody interrupted, one was especially, um, I would appreciate that you stop calling me a puppet. Uh, did it come out of one?
I'm going to tell you.
Did it come out of one, hot motion?
Here we go. Why is it showing everybody? It's interrupting. Order, 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 please, order. Mrs. Oscegi, Mrs. Strada has called.
Order.
Um, and just as you warn him, she keeps doing it. Yes, just to warn him, I think it's fair that each get the same warning.
Um, I would appreciate that you stop calling me a puppet and stop referring to Ms. Madala. If you have something to say, say it to me, I'm nobody's puppet. I'm woman enough to sit here and tell you, talk to me. Um, again, I would like to make a substitute motion, and I'm nobody's puppet. I'm saying that we need to show both sides, not just one, and give it all. Um, you seem to have a very smart attitude this evening, and I apologize if you've had a bad day, but I'm not playing part in that, I have never, I have not been rude to you, I respected you, and I expect the same from you. Uh, we're up here to do a job. Now, with that being said, after everybody interrupted me, I'm the one that had the floor, including, um, our board president, uh, I would like to make a substitute motion in that, along with, uh, posting the, uh, response from the attorney, that we also post and add to the paper the, uh, complaint from Dr. Saavedra. That's my substitute motion.
Second.
Amendment.
Well, amendment, thank you, sir. And my amendment.
Go call.
Mr. Martin, Mr. Martin.
We really need to act like it's all up here.
If I'm not mistaken, also, let me just, uh, point an order here as well, uh, if I'm not mistaken, Dr. Saavedra, I think when the article was published, uh, you know, given the Express News, your PBA complaint as well, they have a copy, and it was printed in the paper, and there was a link to it.
They have the link.
Thank you.
I'm not, if I may, I'm not finished, I'm not regarding, I'm not saying the Express News, you said the Southside Reporter. We said nothing about, um, the Express News, you said you wanted it also printed in the Southside Reporter. So if we're gonna do that, then I would like for his information as well to be available.
Yeah, in the school newspaper.
And the school newspapers as well.
Mrs. Strada, the Southside Reporter was not even mentioned, if you were listening.
With the South Sand. South Sand.
South Sand.
You know, tacky, you know, you need to tit-tat, you know what I mean?
We have a substitute motion by Mrs. Strada, seconded by Ms. Martin, go call, please, Eva.
Mrs. Potter?
No.
Mrs. Strada?
Yes.
Mrs. Delphine?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Longoria?
Yes.
Mrs. Yara?
Yes. Motion passes, thank you.
Do you need to put on a bandage? You just amended the last, now you start after the doctor.
Okay.
No. Substitute motion makes priority.
The substitute motion included the main motion, and the substitute included Dr. Saavedra.
The mo, the motion is now, put them both together, you have not adopted the main motion yet.
Now, we had a substitute motion.
We have substitute motion, substitute motion makes priority.
Substituted motion overrides the motion.
No.
Yes, it always has, all of a sudden, it doesn't now? Did you rewrite Robert's order?
You adopted Robert's rules of order. Robert's rules of order, a substitute motion needs to be approved by the author of the main motion, it was not.
You've never done that.
You can amend the motion, which is what you did, which is why I corrected. So the motion on the floor is to print them both on the website. You still have not adopted that motion. You just need to do, adopt the main motion and vote on it.
We've never done that, never done that, we've always voted on the substitute motion.
That is not Robert's rules of order.
Yes, it is.
Well, they have been Robert's rules of order all this time, so you showed up.
Uh, Ms. Martin, okay, that's enough, we have, uh, we, obviously, legal counsel has advised us, we need to adopt the main motion. However, I ask for a motion, or I made a motion, to adopt the main motion. And I have a second by Mr. Longoria, all in favor, go call Eva.
Discussion. Just so that I can understand, when you're saying the, the main motion, you're, the original motion, or is what I asked for?
Your amendment is now the main motion.
Okay, I just want to be clear, I don't want to make a mistake.
Well, say that.
He did.
I wasn't clear.
Oh, you did?
Mr. O'Hannon, just for clarification, what we are adopting actually is the main motion, including the amended substitute motion.
Yes, substitute, so amended motion, the amended motion includes the additional publication.
Yes, so the, the now amended motion is now what we're voting on.
That is the main motion.
Okay, just, I wanted to be clear, I don't want to do anything illegal.
Thank you.
Eva, go call, please. Yes.
Mrs. Strada?
Yes.
Mrs. Oscegi?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Longoria?
Yes.
Mrs. Yara?
Yes. Yes, motion passes, thank you, Eva. Okay, now we're going to close executive session, uh, close meeting pursuant to the Texas Open Meeting Act, Texas Government Code 551.071, 551.072, 551.074, 551.076, 551.082, and 551.0821. Number one, consultation with the special counsel regarding process, formative, formative conference slash evaluation of the superintendent's performance, and number two, conduct formative conference slash evaluation of the superintendent. The time is, uh, 8:13.
Yeah, this teacher's, I mean, I don't know, I, I thought that she was, it was supposed Yeah, I'm like, he hasn't even seen anything that he hasn't said publicly. Or in his. Yeah, and that's why, that's why she probably wanted to get a pedicure.
Because you hear her slamming.
You hear her, like, I think you're so right, I think you're so lovely.
So I, am I right, they start out with a review of the complaint?
Yeah.
What did I just get pissed?
Yeah. Didn't get it.
I'll just write this one side in, and then they play this recording that did that.
Basically, like, I don't even know how to do that.
But they were all, like, up in arms about it.
They said it had to be with the.
The teacher's.
Simon, yeah.
Yeah.
For two seconds. Right. They did discuss it.
Yeah.
What if I suppose we, I'm like, uh, we have less than an hour to tell it.
Yeah, we're just doing the live VODV.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
I don't even have time.
I'm just gonna say my type, like, the audio. That has like.
Yeah, I think that's what I'm gonna do, see where I just.
Yeah, I know they were all crazy about it, but.
When can you, like, leave this? Because it's in, it's in how it should, that's why I think. But you can pick that up in one, here, and if that way you want, just make sure you use an add-on of this. Click the key. And just click on that just there.
Oh.
Say, try and put this whole out of.
Yeah, that's great.
Because that is like. Just make sure you use an add-on of it and support it. So I'd have to.
What is?
Someone's gonna put this in. Now, you can, you can throw the, I mean, I'm just talking about this one that, that's why I wanted more of a, a standard.
No, that's not, sorry. They're not on, are they?
I think the rest of them. I think she's going to stop.
This sounds wrong. Oh, it doesn't match. She's going in.
Well, this place points over first.
Maybe it's a perfect thing, like, the skill and action. Make sure you just talk.
I always.
You were like, yes.
Yeah.
Sorry.
It's okay, I'm forgiven.
Thank you. Where do I put that? Where I put. I'm gonna need a problem to be put in. Or can I put the slot jack down? In front of this? Right here? The slot. Of course, it starts off with N, then V, then slot, slot, then it's gonna go to V, then slot.
How do you fast forward everywhere?
You okay? Yeah, I'm good, thank you, yeah. Got, got everything.
I wish I knew how to type it to us.
Oh, man, yeah, it's a bunch of words.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, more than that. So you're gonna do things. Oh, and still. Um, then.
So this is probably. Maybe online tomorrow, paper won't say.
Okay.
It depends.
And when you go, what time is it?
Nine.
Nine, yes, okay. Midnight, yes, nine. Oh, somebody left their keys. I think you have a time here.
Yeah, sure.
Yeah, I have to do it now. I could say it's.
The cars. The keys are big.
That might be. Okay, those are the first two slots. Do you want me to go and put the third one on the wrong place? I'm sorry. Okay, so those can be slots. So it's gonna be, um, NAS, VO, then, then, um, his slot and her slot, then VO and then.
Who's this?
Him, he says, young kids do pretty well. Okay, we're gonna do. No, start with my question. I'm sorry, that's fine. Okay. Mm-hmm. That's probably, that he's back to have a product. And then there's separation, we have the two more now. Yes. Yeah, and like, put a tush out with her. I mean, I think. You're just gonna send it to the editors, they're gonna insert it, I think. Okay, so, so policies that send this back, the editors will insert it into the correct slots, right? Okay, okay, good. Um, so I also am starting off in NAS, VO, at the top, so I could pause for NAS. And then it's gonna start VO. And then it's gonna start VO. Yes, yes. So intro to Nats, to VO read, then two back-to-back sock, socks. The first sock is with Seveja. The second one's with Connie Pato. Then it's gonna go VO. And then the last sock is with this grandmother. Her name is Judy. She didn't wanna give her last name. Okay, um, yeah, okay, I'm, I'm about to send you the email now and Paul's, um, he's just finishing up and he'll send it. So, yeah, I mean, going as fast as we can. Okay, I'll keep, oh, no, I know, I know, I know. Okay, no, yeah, cool. Will they have the, will they have, will they have the VO contact vo with Viva?
Mix down.
Paul says, yes, he's mix downing it now. All right, okay, all right, goodbye.
Is that this?
No, Lauren. Oh, do you have the brush drive over there? Yes, yes. Yeah. I think I'm gonna mention the, uh, the recording.
The.
Two. So.
It's not very hot in the room.
I feel like there's other things that I'm.
Okay. You have to pull out sometimes.
Yeah, you can hear it. It's about to. Do you still go? Yeah.
Yes, I'm, I got the things down and I'm trying to run it both out of here. There's a plane now. Is it, is it not here? Uh, I'm gonna ask VO first and then two socks, then come through, follow my one VO and then one final sock. Two socks back-to-back in VO and five sock. Is that, is that VO on the phone?
No, it comes out to me.
I can't hear it because I'm plugged into the laptop, but I see. How are you doing?
Okay, good, good, okay.
Mike, you're on your seat. Take them all.
We'll just go right out here. We don't need to go back. Or, can we go right out here? Or right out in front?
Yeah, you got it.
Take one away.
You need to enter a competition.
Yeah, you think?
Oh, absolutely, I think.
Yeah, maybe. What? What do I do?
No, no, we're speaking.
I know, I've been, it's like.
Let me try to take this way. My old type in future, you know, if you're high tech, seven D. Now, this wasn't the old D, we all type by ourselves. I'll give it to, I'll give it to her, but, yeah, I would take her seat.
I finished it, maybe I.
There aren't any finishing, seriously.
He probably wouldn't have the money.
At least somebody.
It would be pretty fast.
Yeah.
One of them, one of them does ninety.
Wow.
That's faster than what I see him doing. Let's talk about that on the keyboard.
Yeah, I mean, everybody's literally sitting around you in awe.
Sweet.
I wanna hire him.
Yeah, there you go.
It's weird, is he still working well?
Oh, my God, though, yeah, otherwise, I guess, like, you have to do it with the fast.
Yeah, you do, you do.
Yeah.
And nobody does shorthand anymore.
No, and I, it's really stupid that they don't teach their reporters anyone, because like, I, I can't write this fast enough.
Well, and, and what I like is, um, the second best would be a stenographer.
Right, yeah.
Or a course.
I know.
I mean, they use a special, you know, special machine or whatever, but.
Yeah. Right, yeah, if I need, if I, like, talking to people, like, I support it.
No, not yet.
I'm hungry, I wanna go.
Oh, me too. I feel like Italian.
Oh, no, you, you gotta bring food. It's like, oh, my God.
I can have work, and I.
After hearing all that promotion from the other guard, no, like, is a breadstick right on that?
I know, to talk about.
Not crazy, but I'll, I'll take a Mexican plate sometime.
Yeah.
But I got on work and I had a meeting at four thirty. We didn't finish there till ten minutes till six, and I called my, my boys, guys, am I in a meeting? Won't y'all go eat? I said, never mind, I have a meeting, avoid me, y'all go eat. Over here, play.
Yeah.
So you guys.
Yes.
I don't know, I, I would be like dying and angry, just like raging at him.
Well, my record is three A now. Have to be at one meeting.
Yeah. What's your job at the state?
I'm your project manager.
Okay.
My boss.
Yeah, okay, cool. Yeah, they can really, I don't think I've been here before. Well.
It's just a bunch of poems that they put up about that. And then, then it mentioned, and then I had, um, getting a contact with somebody to forget, so I would search.
Yeah, I'm down, I'm down to probably like forty percent.
No, I don't remember since.
Thirty, thirty-three percent.
I have language.
Uh, who do you want to see today? The name is.
Oh, no, I'm not that, just, just put the number in.
It's so.
I just need all the card.
They might deliver.
A little chicken, probably, no?
There you go.
I'd eat soup.
Yeah.
And salad is so good. So we can hear.
Yeah.
Chili's, man. Chili's, man, they have all you need. You can tell it's awesome.
They do?
Yeah, they do. See, I have like a couple weeks ago. I'm good at Chili's because for me, there's not much on the menu that I like. Same thing with Applebee's. Same thing with Applebee's. But App, I mean, I'll learn.
I can just eat breakfast if you're the happy.
And what does it have a salad? And what else did you say?
Chili's?
Yeah, Chili's. Yeah, you can eat soup and salad.
Mm.
Um, but they have, we have soup and salad.
In fact, I love, I'll learn so much. I actually made their soup, the pasta per jour.
Yeah.
I actually made it at home. Big old pot. That's it.
You're just gonna make yourself even hungry.
How's that?
You're just gonna make yourself even hungry.
Oh, I'll be, I'm hungry already.
You make it up there, like, cut some off, could you imagine that there? Like, the rain.
I'm back. Just to take these.
Are you a parent, a teacher, a community member?
Yeah.
A community member?
Yeah.
How old are your kids?
All graduated, one who, my last one's gonna graduate this year.
Oh, cool.
Ninety-four, ninety-seven, twenty-twelve, and twenty-sixty-nine.
Cool.
And I graduate from Southside. Almost end of the year.
Yeah, we're coming.
Ninety-seven, ninety-eight, plus ninety-eight. I'm old. Ninety-one. But I graduated two years ago. I didn't, that's impressive. Graduated sixteen. Wow. Um, done. Finished next. And I told them like, maybe I'll graduate college, but I told them, don't rush it. Because when you get out in the real world, it's all worked. It's gonna be a big deal.
That's what I tell my kids too. My son's gonna graduate this year. I'm gonna know, I'm gonna be able to, maybe I'll see him again.
Yeah.
Chiquita, I'll tell you this. Way back when, during the Beirut crisis, um, only the Beirut company, maybe not even a year, I don't remember, me and my wife were sitting there watching the news, and they had this serious conversation about re-initiating the draft. And there's twice I've left my wife, she texted this a long time. I looked at her and I said, you understand if they really initiate, and I'm thinking, I'm going. She didn't know how to respond to that. Fast forward, I don't think my son was born yet, fast forward eighteen years later, we have this, uh, Baghdad stuff going on up in, and me and my son are watching the news. And he looks at me and says, Dad, you know, they call my number, I'm telling him, yeah. And my old words came back to haunt me. But, you know, I mean, hey, somebody's gotta do it.
Yeah.
And I, I certainly need to be, would die for my country, but, you know, certainly I would give you something, but, but, yeah, that's a great thing your son is doing.
I, I mean, I met with an army guy on the twenty-second of December, which I'm sure he would get it, maybe me.
Trust me.
Yeah.
Trust me, you're not the only mom to have done that, I promise you.
They do recruit pretty aggressively.
Oh, yeah, they did, they did.
Cause like, I, my brother's twenty, and he got all this mail.
Oh, yeah.
In twenty-twelve, it was about April eighth, I drove up to my house and the army guys drove up. Oh, my, you know, I have so and so, and my research is so bad. What do you think about your son Jose and you? I said, Riley, what do you help for? For the government to control me more, they want, then what the government only controls is, but man, you know, you can understand what he, when is it, really? Is that why we have so many homies out there? No, I didn't have it. No, they, I didn't have it. And then this, the twenty-second, when I went and I met with the army guy, I, I come, first of all, I need to, at least I'm talking, we have nothing to align on. I said, I understand you would be eighteen or over, would y'all think it's funny, because I've been two years already. My hus- my husband's watching us.
Oh, you know what? Let me see what you're throwing, like, we're gonna make this on a table.
Oh, I am. I don't know, he would get rid of his ears. A little like. I don't know, just going on ISIS. Do you ever find it for his mom?
Yes.
I'm sure he has his mom going to bed at.
Buddy sauce.
About two typing skills.
I have, I thought that would be a very good.
Now, how are you with texting?
Not serious. Might be sent that through a watch.
Yeah. No, I mean, it should be out of drag, sometimes, because they're walking, hopefully, it just means, maybe when they're. I forgot the wifi key back on. On a laptop, it's like, here, we image it on the LAN network. So, we do want to plug it to the LAN, if you're kidding, that you had internet because you broke it to our LAN, you gotta remember, had the key to the wifi, that might be what she did.
I don't know. Cat sounds?
I don't see where they're all.
No, that's why I was gonna put it on.
They're all.
Take that out.
Put this one up to the bottom one?
No, that one's gonna be, I'm gonna track you through that, and then get that one somewhere.
Where's that set? That was that one, Paul, get that one, it's actually.
Twenty-three, twenty-eight, check this.
Fringe shot. Oh, I didn't love to, I had a little, uh, car for fast, baseball, and, uh, because of my, actually, I paid it for, you know, they do site jobs, that's how we, they kind of make money, they only do things for history. Yeah, and you can, I paid it to you, well, it took it, it's kind of ridiculous, but I'll be sure, I should have lost, I love lost. So, I have this awesome, I just wish the picture of the island, it's more tolerant, maybe, something to jam, pay them, have, put on, like, nylon, or whatever. Well, it's great. It's in my. My wife makes a shit. I didn't tell her how much I paid for it. She doesn't mean it. I told her, I told her he wasn't real for fixing his friend. That's not really true.
Oh, my gosh.
No, it hasn't, why, why is it over anyway?
I've taken a little.
I'm a little.
I paid you to show up.
Right here, yeah, those first two in Texas.
Yeah, I took them a while out, actually. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Bit, yeah, fringe shot, me, too. And they make a lot of money on sites, uh, it's all, it's roughly. Then, through it, it gets, it gets used.
Got it done? Just over, yeah.
Say, does it matter?
No, really?
Ah, sure.
Four is not possible.
I mean, obviously, it's stayed, it's not really possible.
Do you, do you still have that audio thing? Yeah, yeah. I'm sorry. No, not at all. Thank you. Oh, sorry. I wouldn't have heard. It's okay. No, 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 I just wanted. Page, your date. Okay, it's really short, but.
Don't make that.
Um, well, they just basically. Yeah, there was a lot of, uh, nap that Matt will put in, and then be like, order, order, and all that stuff, but, um, if the package portion's okay, I can tweak my intro and tag if there are wanting changes to that. You can have it, but you're like, you don't know it. All right.
Yeah, just, but I beg your time, do it.
Okay.
Oh, thank you.
Okay, and actually, can I call you, um, call you in the town?
Can you just step outside?
Well, let me see. But then we have to, can I talk to Evan? But then do we have to edit it? Do you have to edit it? I don't think you have to edit it here, right? You have to edit it right there, right? Uh, okay, question, it's Aaron. Yeah, okay, um, can we do this as a look live, but feed it back like live? Okay, let me talk to Sandra, or I'll call, I'll just call Sandra. Okay, Evan, Evan, it says we can do a look live. Uh, but I need to plan out that with editors. So, format, I need to make, talk to the editors. Okay, so, so what are we gonna do? What, how do I explain this? Jesus, it's Aaron. Hey, I'm wondering if we can, um, do our ten o'clock as a look live? Um, and we, but we feed it back to you guys as live. Like, right now? It's, yeah, yeah, and insert the slots, it's exactly like the nine o'clock. It's the same thing. But the format and everything, it's the same. Okay, I think you cut down one of the slots, but I mean, in terms of it being like, me, like, on cam, Nasio, Sa, Sa, Vio, Sa, back on cam to me, it's the same. Is that okay with you? If I'm being, do you have time to do that? No, um, he's, he's about to plug in, he's, he's on. Everything? Everything? I can find the, I can find the slots again if you remember. If you can remember.
Um, what was the first one?
That one was in the... Yeah.
Hmm?
Yeah.
I'm gonna tell you that first. But remember the other side might be...
I know. Those ones you'll have to look through.
Thank you.
Okay.
What channel are you on?
Channel five.
Oh, okay.
Channel five.
I watched the very... What's his name? Very inside.
Davis.
Yeah. Are you wearing a... Likewise. Where? Do you have a score from the match? And winning? Name? Who's time? 14... What? Halftime? 14, 14? Who gets the kickoff? Gets the glitzer? On a... On a third quarter? They just scored having a turnover, what? Started with this. I don't know if she's coming back. I don't know. Was she feeding back? Was she feeding back?
No.
Founder.
I was keeping up my track. He came with us.
Ronnie.
Thanks for that. That was better. Thanks for that.
Huh? Very good.
The board will reconvene to open session. The time is nine forty. Uh, members, are you motion to adjourn? I have a motion by Ms. Madla, second by Mr. Morygol, your favor. Please adjourn. The time is nine forty.